Five, July, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Franciac, would you please call the roll, please?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young. Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, a quick, we're on to item number three, announcements and committee reports. Quick COVID update for me. Case numbers down as of this twenty-fifth of last month from, and hospitalizations took a notch upwards, although it's still half of the February, February and March timeframe, ten in a population of a hundred and, a hundred thousand. Island Hospital has one COVID case there. So, fun stuff now. Fourth of July Parade, we announced the winners already on the fourth, but, and will recognize them at council meeting on the eleventh, but from the best marching group, number, third place, Anacortes Twisted Pixies, second place, The Oars, and first place, Roptimus International of Anacortes. And of the best float category, third place, Anacortes Masonic Lodge, second place, Merman of Anacortes, and first place, Anacortes Rotary Centennial Float. So that was, those were the big winners who will be recognized next week at council meeting. So, on to other announcements and committee reports from council.
Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Carter.
I'd like to excuse Mr. Young from tonight's meeting.
And second?
Okay, a motion by Mr. Carter, a second by Mr. McDougal to excuse Anthony Young from tonight's meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, three A, Housing Affordability Community Services Committee report. Do we have a report?
Yeah, Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland.
Thank you. Um, so we had our Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee meeting, our weekly one, June thirtieth, Thursday, um, and we had about five items on our agenda. We talked a little bit about the influx of RVs within Old Town, um, and that community. They invited, uh, three council members to come and discuss that issue, um, and the presence of RVs starting to pop up in Old Town, I believe on Friday. So, we had, um, three council members attend that and just, and discuss the challenges, um, the city's facing with that. Um, our next topic was, uh, about, uh, there's, there's starting to be an, an interest in utilizing property that's owned by churches across the country, um, and if there is surplus of property, utilizing that for either affordable housing or addressing, um, folks who are homeless and using that property. Um, we, we had a really preliminary discussion about it. It appears that there's some, uh, property within Skagit Valley that's been, uh, churches hosting, um, RVs, uh, not in Anacortes currently, but we, we just kind of want to have that brief conversation. Um, Eric Johnson, our previous council member, said that his church, the Episcopal Church, um, is looking at options just in general, just to kind of discuss what, what's out there and possibly for the Gentry House, which is currently closed, and closed during COVID and, and had a pretty major, um, uh, water damage, uh, recently. So they're trying to figure out what to do with that, that building. Um, there is, uh, we were shared that there's a shower trailer available for sale in Olympia, um, and actually, Anacortes, or Skagit Connections currently has one within the county, and that, um, Eric Johnson again, shared that, um, Salvation Army is in the process of trying to get them, uh, the, the shower trailer to our local Salvation Army location, and sometime in July will be available for folks if they need showers, and it'll be hosted by Salvation Army in Anacortes. Um, there was a really large, uh, presentation about recovery-based model, the recovery-based model of behavioral health that was hosted by the City of Mount Vernon, um, and a couple of folks from HACs, or our HACs Committee attended that, and it's really about focusing on, um, client-centered strategy for treatment and care. Um, there, we're trying to get out some of, some more information, um, to our stakeholders in the community, but it kind of goes along with our North Star, what they're discussing with North Star, um, of, of behavioral health. And then finally, there's a rapid rehousing grant and, um, applications due August eleventh, and then, um, just a kind of general discussion of, of what's going on with, um, low-barrier shelters, both in Skagit County with First Steps, and then what, um, what's going on up in Bellingham with the Twenty-Two North, um, project. So it was a nice kind of recap, and, and we're going to continue to try to do, uh, meetings once a week or once every other week, um, depending on necessity, but we want to kind of block that out, so folks are still avail, available to, um, come and, come and attend. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Public Works Committee, Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met just before this meeting. It was Mr. Walters and myself and public work staff. We had a brief conversation about the Whistle Lake Dam that has been determined to be, uh, not a good dam based on its age, and they, there was an earlier conversation about building a road, but since then ecology has encouraged the city, the Department of Ecology, has encouraged the city to apply for a FEMA disaster mitigation grant to do a planning study, to see how bad is it really? Maybe not so bad. So that, that's good news. We talked about a contract modification that is on tonight's agenda, so I will leave that. We have an upcoming presentation by staff and, um, our consultant, Jordan Widener. And then we talked about our Fifth Street Water Main Emergency that happened on June twenty-second. It was a failure of an asbestos concrete pipe, and about two-hundred-and-eighty feet of that was replaced, and, and this happened at midnight, as all good failures do. Um, and fortunately, there's no private property damage, and that will be replaced next week, and there will also be some, some pavement repair over that, where the break was. Next week at council, we will be seeing a contract with RBC coming forward for fiber installation, um, on Highway twenty near Campbell Lake, and due to the, the pipe running under the middle of the road, that will be an aerial installation because that's all that's accessible. And that is it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And on to Public Safety Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Carter.
We met earlier today, and from the fire side, if I understood it correctly, there were no reports of any injuries from fireworks or fires. Oh, and then also we have Chief Kennedy announced his retirement, which will be about the end of July. And then also the Fire Department is, uh, just about at a hundred percent of their overtime budget for twenty-twenty-two, so there's going to be a budget amendment coming to the City Council in the future. And then also, we have the Community Paramedic Agreement with, uh, the Island Hospital will also be coming up soon. On the police side, all of the recent promotions are getting settled in and accredited in their new positions, and then also the Police Department's going to be going out for a new higher eligibility list. And then if there's anything I missed because I had to jump off there, uh, right before the meeting was over.
Okay, thank you. And on to Personnel Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee met last week, and it was council members, Cleland McGrath, Council Member Young and I met with staff, and we talked about labor relations and the police collective bargaining update that is moving forward with mediation. We did decide to change some of, some outdated language in our job titles and descriptions. Basically, Teamster positions, including the title worker, will be adjusted to technician, and we, we changed the Fire Department Secretary to Fire Department Administrative Assistant to, to update our language there also. And we talked about different positions that are currently open and that we're accepting applications for, um, and a list of those can be found on the city website. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, three E, Port City Liaison.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. We, um, had a meeting that was primarily just a bunch of updates about things that have already been discussed here at council, including the city outfall project, both the in-water and the uplands. We touched base on the economic development plan and the development of the new Economic Development Committee, um, also brought up the RVs as well as, this is something that ties in directly to economic development, and we've, um, seen that happen. Um, we had some very specific instances that were mentioned. Also gave a quick update on the amazing events that are happening over the summer, including the concert series Shipwreck Ace and Arts Festival. We also had a quick discussion, uh, gave an update on fiber being laid down with the five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that's coming in from the county, and when we can expect that, as well as touching base on what's happening with the ferry system and the MJB property.
Okay, thank you. Any other, uh, announcements or committee reports from council that I missed? All right. Moving on to item number four, this is, uh, the opportunity for members of the public to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda, and I have a member of the public that has signed up, this Pat Gardner. Come on up and turn the microphone on and address the council.
Am I on?
Yeah, you can move, you can move the microphone closer.
Mayor, council members, I'm Pat Gardner. I want to thank the city and Mother Nature for a beautiful Fourth of July here in Anacortes. The parade was great. Keep the politics out of it, though. And the fireworks were just, it was beautiful. I really, I can't thank you all enough for, and all the team, all the teamwork you put into it and the city itself. It was great. Thank you. On another note, um, on, I, you know, I hear on the internet, I talk to people, this is in regards to the waterfront development, and I know you've all heard a lot of things coming and going on that. My, uh, thought, coming from another town, when there was a large development in such a case being put in place and, and everything, there's so much false information put on about what you guys are going to do, what the city's doing. They had put up a huge, I don't know, five-by-ten billboard, like at the end of Twenty-Second, past the roundabout, with a graph of what is being done, an aerial maybe, and maybe a side view with what is proposed. I know you don't know all the businesses and everything that's being brought in because you still need to get, you know, still get going, but height limit on the front, in the back, and the different heights that are being proposed are within regulations for the city, having a graph with an aerial view and then one with a height view, maybe at the end of, like I said, end of Twenty-Second, past the roundabout, up on that fence, and maybe at the end of Seventeenth on the fence there, but a huge map so people can see for themselves, make their own decision. Also, it was suggested the, the newspapers, Skagit Valley Herald and the Anacortes, uh, if they could put something in, because I'm hearing things and everybody else has got opinions, and I say, well, I'll go put my two cents' worth in, and see if this isn't possible, putting up, I mean, other cities have done it, and I know it costs money to put up something like this, but, uh, it would help defray a lot of falsehoods about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate a little reply on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, what I can, the city has only issued permits for, um, what we call curb gutter sidewalks, so there aren't any proposed businesses in there. The council has worked over many years to, to zone the area for marine mixed use, so, uh, they have not yet recruit, we've, the, the city has platted the area, but no known business entities as of yet.
I've heard that, you know, I understand.
And that, and that's, that's correct.
Yeah, I understand that.
So they're still work, they're still working to, to recruit what, whether it's a hotel, whether it's townhouses.
But are you?
It is zone marine mixed use.
But are there height areas, certain parts of the development that are permitting, let's say, a three-story versus a five in the back or a two and stuff? Is there certain areas that are designated height-wise?
Yeah.
That could be put in the paper and on a chart for people to see?
So, yeah, we'll, we'll take your information and, 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 because I'm, I'm reluctant to quote code.
I understand, I understand.
In case I memorize it incorrectly.
I understand.
But yes, we do have, we, it is zoned, and it is called marine mixed use.
Yeah.
Other than that, if I start citing the details of the code, I might get it wrong.
I understand, but I'm just suggesting.
But I, yeah, I'm sure that's on our website and our zoning, in our zoning area, but the specific of what's actually going in there, I, I can't, we can't answer that yet.
Because there's so much discontent, as you probably, you know, and one, and we're all anxious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I don't see anybody online, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. Council, item five.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubig to approve Consent Agenda Items A through F. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. On to other business, item six, and starting with item six A, Contract Modification and Wastewater Treatment Plant Outfall Permitting Services. And Mr. Holman, you're going to introduce this one, I'm guessing.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Miller.
You are on.
Members of the council, uh, members of the public at home. I'm gonna, uh, speak to you a little bit about the modification in a little bit, but first I wanted to, uh, take this opportunity to introduce you, uh, Jordan Widener, who's the President of Widener and Associates. So she's the, the president of the company, uh, that, uh, this contract will be with, and I just thought it would be a good opportunity to kind of put a face with a name. So, I'm gonna hand over to Jordan, let you, let her tell you who she is and why we value her, her work so much. Jordan, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, yeah. Thanks, Tim. I got a presentation that I'll try to pull up here. Can you guys see this okay?
Yes, we got it.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, hi, as Tim said, my name is Jordan. I am the President of Widener and Associates, and I just kind of want to give you guys a brief recap of me and my company, and explain kind of why you keep seeing our name popping up on several contracts with the city. So, a little bit more about me. Uh, I graduated from UC Berkeley in two thousand and fifteen with a degree in environmental science. Uh, from there, I actually moved down to Kelso, Washington, and worked to do a BNSS Environmental Compliance Program for their WASD.RA Task Four, Five, and Six projects under the stimulus program. Uh, these projects actually created the Third Main for BNSF from Kelso all the way to Kalama. Uh, under these projects, I was really able to develop a good relationship with the permitting agencies for the state and the Cowalitz Tribe, and we actually worked to create mitigation requirements that were part of Task Four, Five, and Six, used those to fund one of the tribe's habitat projects that they were trying for the past, like, fifteen years to try to get funding for. So, uh, we kind of created this opportunity to fund this project and create a good habitat mitigation project that was beneficial to all parties. Um, because of this, uh, it was a huge reason why BNSF's Task Four, Five, and Six projects, they actually received the National Hay Award for Excellence in Innovation in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, that's a BNSF Railroad National Award that they provide to, uh, Class One railroads. Um, and then after two thousand and seventeen, uh, into twenty twenty, I managed the environmental permitting and compliance for large-scale transportation projects in the City of Fife and Sumner, and also for Yakima County. Uh, these projects included Port De Coma Road interchange over I-five, the Bridge Street Bridge, uh, replacement for the City of Sumner, and then the East-West Corridor Interchange Project. And then from twenty twenty till now, uh, my latest projects have been in FEMA involvement. We do, uh, kind of major disaster declarations for when there's disasters in the state. We've been working to declare them through FEMA and help local cities and counties get federal and state funding for repairs. Uh, and now, a little bit more on Widener and Associates, my company. So, Widener and Associates is a multidisciplinary transportation, infrastructure, environmental compliance, and planning firm. We've been in business for over twenty-three years, and I actually assumed ownership from my father in twenty twenty. Uh, our company itself has permitted over six hundred projects, and really our main goals are to provide cost-effective environmental services, such as writing environmental, uh, biological assessments and then obtaining state and federal permits. Uh, we really try to provide, like, custom services to our clients' needs, uh, including BNSF coordination, we do fish exclusion, and we also provide executive helicopter and passenger plane services, uh, to kind of get at what, what projects are needed and provide the services that our clients most likely need. Uh, so I'll also move on to the next slide. Kind of the latest projects that we've done for the City of Anacortes itself, um, are listed above. These are kind of our big ones. So, we provided environmental permitting, construction compliance, and documentation services, uh, for the Gwimish Trail, the Fidalgo Emergency Culvert Replacement, Thirty-Second and M Avenue Roundabout, um, and kind of few other ones as well. Uh, we mostly focus on obtaining federal and state permits for the projects that are needed, and then on the FEMA side, we work to provide the appropriate FEMA funding documentation to get them into the Public Assistance FEMA Program. Um, and then here is a list of the few recommendations I have, uh, if you guys would like them, I'm more than happy to provide. And then we also have a few projects of, that we've permitted and worked on over the past few years, and just kind of showing, this is actually the City of Everson that was flooded out, and that we're working kind of through the FEMA program to help them get repairs done for their public transportation projects that have been affected. You'll see Fidalgo in the bottom left corner there, for the Emergency Culvert Repair as well. And I'll turn it back over to Tim.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jordan. So, um, I just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of share who Jordan is, and like I said, why we value her so much, but I wanted to share a, a little bit more. So, so Widener and Associates has been helping us, uh, with, as you saw, with our FEMA coordination on, on various, uh, kind of, is that, FEMA calls them disasters, I would say, than emergency events that have happened around town. Um, and those are, are, when those events happen, there's obviously a, a period, uh, timeframe that you can apply for funding, uh, during those, and those, uh, come with, uh, fairly stringent, uh, documentation requirements as well as, uh, environmental permitting requirements. And I, I would say that, uh, the biggest risk factor that exists with, uh, the FEMA system, uh, the FEMA system is a reimbursement program, so the city, uh, develops the project in coordination with FEMA, but the city foots all the bills upfront and then reimburs, re, uh, submits for reimbursement after the fact. So the, the biggest risk that exists in this FEMA funding, uh, system is, is that permitting requirement. Uh, so if, if you don't follow all the federal rules for permitting, that misstep along the way can make you ineligible in the future. And so, the, the beauty of having Widener and Associates, uh, helping with our FEMA coordination upfront, so with the documentation, getting involved in the grant program, as well as following along as a member of the design team, uh, keeping, keeping that permit compliance piece with the funding piece fitting together seamlessly, uh, really protects the city's investment in these projects. So that, that's why you see, uh, maybe a few more Widener and Associates contracts, and that's, that's a, as, aspect of the FEMA accounting. So, the FEMA reimbursement documentation is, is eligible for reimbursement in a different format than the, uh, design team permitting, and at different times in the process. So we keep those set, contracts separate, which results in, say, twice the amount of contracts for Widener and Associates. So that, that's an explanation of, of why you see quite a few Widener and Associate contracts coming before you, and we do, because of what Jordan said, value, value their expertise significantly. Um, I, a little bit, I would even say that they probably stand alone in their understanding of both the funding and the permit compliance, uh, component. Um, I, as, as far as, as this project goes, this is, uh, a modification to the permit requirements for the, the design and construction of the, of the outfall project. Um, that is, like I said, a FEMA project. That project has recently been, um, selected, uh, for reimbursement by FEMA, so that, that's great news, um, and that's why you're seeing multiple contracts coming before you. Each one of the design teams, uh, consultants, the designers, the construction managers, and Widener and Associates, the permit, uh, permit consultant, we held, held back the construction, uh, elements of those, of those contracts. We knew they were coming, we had full intention to come to you with these modifications, and we've divided that project into upland and marine. So, we're entering into the construction phase of the marine portion, uh, and these modifications that you'll see, including this one before you tonight, are, are modifications for the marine construction. You'll see more modifications coming for you as we enter into construction for the upland portion. Once again, that's, that's good project management, that's protecting, not, not opening the full tide gates, it's protecting the city's, uh, pocketbook as we go piece by piece incrementally through a project. Um, so these, these are, this is a totally expected, uh, addition of scope. Obviously, you add scope, you're going to add fee, um, but this is a, an added addition of scope, and, uh, as a staff, we recommend approval of this modification.
Thank you, Tim. And, uh, again, just for the public's reminder, these are multimillion-dollar projects that, quite honestly, you know, we don't have the money in our, in our bank account to make happen without that, without that FEMA reimbursement. So it's very complicated and, uh, and keeps me up at night a little bit until I get the word that FEMA is really going to pay, then I feel a little more comfortable. But I, I know council's aware, uh, but again, uh, council asked for some little more insight into Widener and Associates, so, uh, here we are. So, council, if you've got any questions for either, you know, our primary consultant on this, or of course our Public Works team of superstars. Council. Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. We had a good conversation about this at our Public Works Committee meeting that just happened, um, talking about the process that, what Tim's just stated about how the timing works, I think is really, is really helpful for us to know, and also waiting till the, the funding is actually approved by FEMA, and if you could just give us a little bit more detail on the percentages and the amount of the funding that's coming through from the federal government?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Moulton. So, um, the, the recent funding, uh, the recent funding piece that FEMA gave to us is to approve our revised alignment for the, the, uh, the new outfall alignment. It, they have, uh, the initial estimate, which is what they approved funding for, uh, was in the range of sixteen-point-one million dollars. So FEMA has agreed to that, that estimate and that new alignment, and said they'll fund that, they'll, they've said sixteen-point-one million dollars, but they will fund actual costs. So if there's cost overruns... So if there's cost overruns, FEMA will, as long as we follow all the process that they have, will be involved in that. And they've, they've said that FEMA standard is to fund projects at 75%, but this project falls within a timeframe when the federal government has decided to fund the projects at 90%. So this project's eligible for 90%. The state has offered up reimbursement of the, half the remainder, so this project is fundable at 95, reimbursable at 95% of actual costs.
Any other questions for the team? Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Well, I think, I think we're good. And I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign the contract modification with Widener and Associates in the amount of $165,218, increasing the total contract price to $568,802.77.
Second. Yeah, motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Carter to authorize the contract modification wastewater treatment plant outfall permitting services. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters. Yes. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. All right, thank you very much, Jordan, and thanks for the presentation. Okay, we're on to item 6B, ordinance 4023, source control program, and this is our first reading of this one, so this is discussion item. And Ms. Hennebert is on, on the Zoom machine to tell us about this program. Ms. Hennebert.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Maybe. There we go. Showing up where it should?
Yep, we can see it.
Excellent. There. So, good evening, mayor, council, and members of the public. I'm Diane Hennebert. I'm the stormwater program manager for the city, and I'm here to talk to you about ordinance 4023 and the program that will be built from it. So chapter 1830 of our municipal code addresses illicit discharges to the storm drainage system. Now, an illicit discharge is anything going to the storm system that isn't rainwater, with a few exceptions. This ordinance will amend the chapter to require source control best management practices for pollution generating activities. So it'll provide the pathway to be proactive about preventing illicit discharges instead of addressing them after the fact. And this amendment will be the backbone of the upcoming source control program. Source control is stopping pollution at the source before it enters the storm system. So rain washes dirt and oil from the parking lot, excess fertilizer from the lawn, trash from the curb into our storm system. A storm system here in Anacortes empties into the Salish Sea, typically with little to no treatment. As water quality declines, we need to find new avenues to protect our waterways. It's significantly cheaper to stop pollution before it enters the storm system than it is to try and treat the water to remove it afterwards. And a lot of source control best management practices are actually pretty basic. Things like dumpster maintenance. You keep the lids closed on your dumpsters so you're not getting rainwater on your trash. Does your dumpster leak? Sweeping up materials instead of hosing them to the storm drain, you know, keeping a spill kit on site. It's simple steps like that that can make a really big difference for water quality. So that's the what of source control. Here's the why. As you know, the city is under a Western Washington Phase II municipal stormwater permit, which is part of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES. And we're midway through our five, current five-year cycle for the permit, and this current permit requires the creation of a source control program. And we have many deadlines for that coming up, the first of which is code adoption by August 1st of 2022, and then moving on to outreach to businesses in the fall and a launch of the program on January 1st of 2023. So this ordinance was written to provide the foundation for the source control program and to meet the requirements of our NPDS permit. Staff utilized guidance documents from the Department of Ecology and the Washington Stormwater Center, as well as an analysis of code from jurisdictions that have existing source control programs in place, and we use those to structure this ordinance. So the source control program is making sure that businesses are employing proper stormwater practices to prevent pollution in the storm system. To build our inspection inventory, so the businesses that fall underneath this program, the inventory is based on industrial codes that are contained in Appendix 8 of our NPDS permit. So really, the big ones are industrial manufacturing, food manufacturing, restaurants and bars, construction, gas stations, vehicle repair and maintenance, and healthcare facilities. So it's staff's desire to have the focus be heavily on education and technical assistance. So this is an opportunity to do outreach to affected businesses and provide the technical assistance and give them the materials at the time we're there. We'll also be doing outreach ahead of the program launch, that they know it's coming and what kinds of things we'll be looking for. See it as an opportunity to work with them as opposed to just come in and regulate their business. However, we do need to have an enforcement route available when necessary. Source control programs already exist in larger jurisdictions, and most sites that go through the inspection process do not have to go through the enforcement process. Our permit requires that we complete the number of inspections equal to 20% of the number of businesses in our business inventory. We're expecting that to be roughly 40 inspections a year here, and with that kind of frequency, a business can expect to be inspected roughly every five years. Some high priority industries might be inspected a little more often, and a really low-risk business could go more than five years between inspections. We're also required to look into all credible citizen complaints. So say you own a business and a source control inspector shows up. That inspector will be there to look at the property and the outside of the building. The biggest items that this person's gonna want to look for or talk to you about would be good housekeeping practices, like regular sweeping of your outdoor areas, covered outdoor storage if it's possible, dumpster maintenance, secondary containment for any outdoor chemical storage, you know, do you have a spill kit on site? Do you know how to use it? And if you have any privately owned stormwater infrastructure, like a storm pond or an oil-water separator, is it being properly maintained? There are also some specialized best management practices for industries like gas stations, boat builders, vehicle repair, construction. All of the required best management practices are contained in the 2019 Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington, which the city has adopted. A source control program webpage was launched last month on the city website, which provides information and timelines for the coming program, as well as links to all of the suggested best management practices. So summarize what we covered here. Source control program inspects the outdoor areas of a business for stormwater best management practices to aid in preventing illicit discharges to the storm drain system. Our focus will be on education and technical assistance with enforcement only as needed, and this ordinance will provide the necessary base on which we can build the program. Our deadline for code adoption is August 1st, and we'll start outreach to businesses in the fall with inspections starting in 2023. Some more information on the source control website, which is up here on the screen, including links to all of ecology's best management practices, or you can reach out to me directly. And I'll take your comments and questions and be back on July 18th. Put it to a vote. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. This, this one's open for public comment, so if there's any members of the public, either here in person or online, looking for a hand online, buddy here in City Hall? Okay, council, questions, comments? Mr. Walters.
Mayor Miller, thank you. Ordinarily, I would say, or overall, I would say the ordinance looks pretty good. There is a new definition of illicit discharge on the second to last page there, and it references 1830030. That should be 040, because you've renumbered the illicit discharge section. And we talked about a couple of other tweaks in the public works committee, and if you make those, then you might, might need to renumber again. But I would, I would say it's a very, very straightforward ordinance in its text by itself, but it does make gigantic references to the stormwater manual, and so someone reading along who isn't reading the stormwater manual might not really know that their business or their activity is implicated by this code section. So for example, vehicle repair is listed there. What about somebody doing vehicle repair in their own driveway? Are they implicated by this source control provision?
No. Now, if they were dumping their oil into the storm drain, it wouldn't fall under the source control program, but it would be considered to be an illicit discharge.
So there's no additional measures they need to take as, I ask this because it's not hypothetical, this came up last year. There's no additional measures that they would need to take to be compliant with source control? They don't have to have a, a covered area to work on their car, anything like that?
No, not under the source control program.
Okay, good, good. I also note that this ordinance went to the planning commission. Typically, we send plans and development regulations to the planning commission, and I, I think we ought to be clear that this is not a development regulation and nobody vests to it. If you've been, if you've been keeping a leaky dumpster for the last 10 years, well, times they are a change, and, and it doesn't matter that you've been doing it for 10 years. You're not vested to, or grandfathered in to your previous behavior. It has to change now as a result of our permit requirements that are handed down to us by the state and federal government. I don't want to get anybody confused because it went to the planning commission like development regulations do, which typically you do vest to, at least for building permits and subdivisions. That's all I got.
That's a very good point. Any other council members, comment, questions? All right, going once, going twice, we'll see you back on the 18th. And, okay, thank you, Ms. Hennebert.
Thank you.
All right, being no further business before the council, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you very much.